Oh. Yeah, I always do that.
Wasn't getting the picture. I think we're good.
Yeah.
Because I know if I wear them around much, I need an add source.
Well, there's a lot of people who have very active, like, their family members and they're wearing on.
Yeah. 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 Well, I was looking for some kind of just shift. I was like, oh, sure. It's not just something to sell. Oh, it's in the people. Doesn't it? I'm just one out there. Very hard to do, you know, that one. So he's up there.
I saw him really briefly running.
That was off here.
He's here, but he just got back.
And where is the sign?
Yeah, he's not even there.
It's not off. It's not working. They may come so far.
Yeah. Something I did.
Yeah.
It was obviously you just walked, yeah, you just got there.
I did my shoes, I did my boots and all that stuff.
Yeah.
What's that? How would you want? With these hand canucks on your ears.
Oh, he showed his shoes.
I have this little hat with a feather in my bed.
You're not doing this?
I didn't care.
Yeah, I, to me, that's something that does. Do that first.
I know, I'm just going to go on this like, walk.
Yes.
You think he's doing that? I got jewelry, I got two box tubes.
You know, he's saying, I'm going to decide to someone to do that. It could be more than making a reason or the fact of what I'm doing.
Yeah. I don't know why I can't sleep. Yeah. Oh, no, I know. I don't want to sit down. It's all sort of ours. But once you're, I did, once you're...
I want these two activities.
All of the expenses like we do with everything else. So. John, you got any comments on that?
Yeah, generally the hearing examiner is, then your attorney or the attorney. You know, and their knowledgeable, uh, regulations as to date. And I'm working on all this stuff. Is all the, they're professional, they're knowledgeable.
What rules do they follow? Do they follow city code or is there a county code?
They follow city code and all the state rules and everything.
Okay.
And if your city calls a lot of it snuck, they come back and they say, okay, we need to. That's one of the advantages.
Actually, that's a good thing.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the advantages of having a hearing examiner come in and come in. And he will, he will critique what we have.
So does that take the power away from city council and mayor and the people from saying, whoa, we don't want that? As opposed to, yeah.
You still have hearings, like open hearings. If there's some land use issue, there'll be a public hearing or open hearing. Those things are still retained. Uh, but basically, uh, the, the move comes, if you don't want something in, it has to be put in code. In other words, in our, in our ordinances. And our ordinances, I think, are very good. There's some things I would change on them. Uh, but there's always something someone would change on them. And, uh, we're looking at probably very little land use action in the future because of, uh, the theme of biological option. So, uh, there's very limited activity I'm expecting in the future. But the answer to your question is, you, you, you don't have a way to appeal to the council on this.
So there's some, is there checks and balances or just he checks it, passes it, see it, please?
And he checks it and that's it.
Yeah. It's like the apparent, what you would have done.
Well, yes, and that was where, in fact, it was Deborah Knight that, uh, she and I discussed this. And she discussed it more than I did. And I talked about, I felt that the council should have a final yes-no on it. And she was extremely harsh about that. But that was based on, uh, a particular Sultan experience that has things like houses sliding down the hill. And, uh, so that was, that was her take on it. But again, that's, uh, that's the council because when we write the ordinance for the hearing examiner, that is an option. I'd say it's how you write your laws. And once you write them, you have to follow them. So you probably ought to try to do a good job, write it, practical job.
I'm, I'm sure there'll be plenty of time to discuss this, but I, I agree with James that, you know, it, it, it's kind of tough to leave it in somebody else's hands as to what happens in your city. And I, I mean, there, there could be those checks and balances where the hearing examiner makes a recommendation to the council. And then maybe the hearing examiner hears the citizens as well as the city council prior to making a decision would, would be better than just leaving it up to the hearing examiner to make the decision for you.
Yeah, but in some, to some degree, it's going to be robo-examiner. So if you say, if you run an audit to say you can build a house of, you know, five feet squared, six hundred feet high. Someone wants to build it, there's, you know, it's, it's golden. So, uh, but I mean, that gives an example. Yes.
And just, you know, just for your knowledge, when I went to work here, the city of Gobar had a hearing examiner on board.
Oh, yeah?
And I don't know who I was, and I don't know if they utilized that hearing examiner after I got here. But, uh, I do remember they did have a hearing examiner.
Okay.
Yeah, I only remember the planning commission, you know, when I got there.
And our ordinance.
They did have both. So anyway, so there is an ordinance to be developed and the ordinance will reflect what the, uh, what the citizens in the city of Gobar expects. We've got like a couple of options now. Okay, any more discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, Stormwater Utility, second reading. City of Gobar ordinance number six thirty-three and ordinance acting a new Title fourteen that establishes a stormwater utility for the city of Gobar, Washington. For discussion, I entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number six thirty-three for second reading.
For second reading and approval? Does that have to be an approval?
An approval.
They're a good candidate for a vote. They're a good candidate. Second.
Second.
Okay, uh. Bob, this is your area. I need to show that.
Okay, well, this is very simple and we tried to go as straightforward as we can. Probably not the best ordinance in the world, but we're hoping it'll work for at least now and get utilities started. And right now, it's just charge every residence in essence. Some tax parcels have more than one residence on the boards, so each residence gets to pay as well. There are some issues, however, that are gonna, you know, when, uh, when we actually have to do something, you know, like, uh, in particular, I was thinking of, you know, the, the, the settling pond out by grant. You know, we have the rights and all that jazz, we have to put some in his yard, which is not very cool, but that's what we gotta do. And the other, and, uh, at some point in time, we actually have to go to the point where we're not just, paying what we did last year for streets and that kind of stuff. We gotta start to think, well, what kind of private maintenance are we gonna have to do? Maybe that's next year when we do our rate study, we can be more official about it than right now. I believe this will work for, to get us through the year or something. Much more official or complete.
Another rate study for what we need right now.
Yes.
You spent the time on that.
Yes.
The thing that's gonna come up is what additional things do we have to do? Because this is a bear ball. Uh, we can go for grants. There's grants out there, as you noticed, that need. Most of those are for construction.
Yeah.
And, uh, and then we also have the advantage that we utilize the, uh, the formatory guys for a lot of this time work, like refurbishing. The, uh, set, the settlement.
Right.
The, uh, call it catch basin.
Settling.
Settling.
Okay.
And, uh, but this will get us going and take care of the two hundred and forty-four catch basins we died. Four balls and, uh, give us a start on how many settling ponds we have. A dozen or so?
Hope I have guard there. Seven.
Seven, okay.
But the whole point is, you know, the next year, we start looking at being proactive, you know, which is gonna.
Yeah, and then also, uh, next session, we need to do the resolution for the, for, for, for the rate. Any more discussion questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Grounds maintenance, I think you have a photograph of a different scandal in, unfortunately. Uh, what we, what we did last year, uh, we purchased, uh, the push behind, uh,
DR number?
It wasn't DR, it was the aggressive, turned out, uh, cutters. And they're used, and the reformatory guys are using that and they refurbished all of the weed eaters, uh, uh, back into good condition. Now we've got some additional work to do, which is for hedge trimmers and branch cutters, about eight hundred dollars worth of equipment, new equipment to use. So that we can particularly maintain parts of US two arc and some of the shrubs around there. Sherry did a lot of work to, to, and, uh, to investigate this. Does this come out of refunds?
Yes.
This comes out of the capital equipment funds we have is funded by house sales, basically, real estate X Y X. And we have money in there for this sort of thing. And so it's approximately eight hundred dollars. And, uh, I have to go ahead and get a motion to approve this for purchase.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the purchase of these power tools in the amount of seven ninety-nine eighty-five on a second.
And I don't know if that includes, that include tax? I didn't, I don't have it in front of me.
Well, I'll amend the motion to include tax.
Give it there.
On second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, now, this is time for our quarterly review of the budget. And each of you have a copy of it. We can just start. Ken is not here and he's, uh, well, he'll probably have something to say next, uh, council session on this. In the meantime, uh, if you have any questions, uh, Laura, if you're here, you can answer all of them off the table here.
Well, I was struck by how much the income isn't matching the expenses at this particular moment. I would assume that we have got various taxes in.
Right.
The, it gets the property tax.
Yeah.
And property taxes due on April fifteenth.
So they, they come in and then we get.
Does it name? Okay. That's kind of what I thought.
And I, I had a couple of questions too on, um, the city assistance from state. The last I heard, that was line three, 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 six, zero, zero, nine, eight, zero as well.
Yeah.
Under licenses and contracts. Cause the last I had heard, just, you know, in the news from the state was that they were kind of going to hold on to funds that they were going to distribute to the city. Now, is that sales tax funds or liquor funds?
Okay, that was sales tax fund. They were going to delay payments to the city. However, in this section, we are looking at possibly a world hurt. Because they're talking, we reduced, uh, our, uh, liquor money along with last year in expectation of what was being said. And we reduced our city assistance from the state and what, based on what was being said and estimated. And it may be worse than that. Uh, they're talking about sweeping all of the liquor money. Uh, and there's discussions going on, but the local agencies have not done well at the state. State needs money, you know, so that's the way it goes. So I, I don't, I don't know what's gonna happen there, but it's not a good prognosis. And there is a possibility there will be a second special session.
Yeah, I heard that too.
So we may not know until June.
So how are we going to?
Yes. Yeah, we just will be as careful as we can.
And the pipeline safety grant on the second page, that was just a one-time.
That was a one-time grant, yeah. And we still need to write one up. It's, it's very incidental. We did our background research on it. Did Williams Pipeline come out? They're doing all of the notifications that, uh, were requested because that's what they do, it's federal law. Uh, and there's no planned expansion of the, of, of the pipelines in, in Gobar. Uh, the, uh, Sultan hit a cropper on that because, uh, they could not come up with a, ordinance that satisfied everybody, so they, they, they didn't do one at all.
I was noticing under on, uh, five fourteen finance, you know, we're already at forty-four percent of our annual budget.
What's that? Let me.
It's on page three.
Yeah, it's, it's on page two, sorry, second. Under miscellaneous revenue, we've got a lot more money in than we expected, but that, what's miscellaneous revenue?
Miscellaneous revenue.
Well, it's good news, I guess.
No, I think she put it in the wrong spot. I think it's supposed to be the donation.
It's a lot of donations.
Who put what in the wrong spot?
Denise, when she bring, when she, um, does the date and cash out. I'm, I'm going.
Okay, you know, cause donations got good money in, which seems to reflect what has come in.
Oh, Department of Preparating, that was, um, a refund from Verizon that we had, um, it was in.
I know, but that's what Margaret worked on last year?
No, that is what I worked on.
Oh.
That the state had in, um, holding.
Oh, oh, okay.
Fund that until somebody claims it, unclaimed property.
Unclaimed property, okay.
Verizon had sent us a check to our PO box that has not been in effect for at least six years that I know of. And so it got returned back to Verizon. So Verizon forwarded it to unclaimed property, so I got that money.
Oh, cool, okay, cause it was another Verizon thing that she was working on. All right.
No, that's eighteen and two. Eighteen and two has a.
It goes to twelve. Okay.
So five fourteen finance?
Okay, five fourteen finance. Okay.
Well, we're at forty-four percent of our annual budget, so I don't know if there's time, phase issues or.
Yeah, take, take a look at liability insurance. Liability insurance is paid in January.
UIC, yeah.
And, and that's nineteen thousand versus we budgeted thirty. Is that because?
It's split twenty-two months.
Okay. And we, we spent less this year than we have in previous years. So it was how it got split, okay.
My question is more on phasing and that kind of thing.
A lot of stuff is front-end loaded.
Right, that's what I meant, yeah.
Now, repairs and maintenance on the computer.
That's what I was wondering about that.
Uh, we're having some sort of mysterious problem with the server. And we've had him out working on it and the server will, will, will shut down, will lock up, uh, how, twice a week or so? More than that. And we're trying to figure out what is the cause and can't really tell. And so we're working, uh, trying to determine, uh, if someone's trying to hack it, we're trying to determine if there's some interaction between the, uh, well, for, uh, utilization in it and can't seem to trap the, the problem. And so this is what they've, he's been working on for, what, three weeks now?
Okay, but from a budget point of view, is twenty-five hundred dollars actually gonna be enough?
No, I'm certain it's not because we, we estimate twenty-five hundred was just sort of normal support.
Right.
So that's one that's gonna have to be looked at and, um, gotta keep it running.
Well, of course, I understand, yeah. I'm just, aren't we supposed to be responsible, you know?
Yeah, I know, yeah, that's, uh, that's, uh, now, the next one below it is sort of worse. It's worse, and I'm surprised. Ken, Ken Ware was, was, beat his fist to the table, said this wasn't gonna happen this year.
Yeah.
Oops. So Lynn's, uh, almost doubled the budget.
Yeah.
Dues, fees and subscriptions and memberships.
Yeah, twenty-three, forty-nine, I don't know. Okay, let's take. Where's the dollars on this?
On the left.
No, it's. It's right here.
Oh, okay.
The big hit is bias.
Okay. But we knew how much we would be paying on bias and how come we missed it in the budgeting process? That's a question.
My question is this.
Yeah.
We, we just worked out how much money on bias.
We talked about bias.
And I asked if there were, if there were gonna be any more hits. Do we have to pay subscriptions or maintenance fees?
Yes, we do every year.
Okay, hold on a second, but the answer then was no. That the upgrade fee that we paid was it.
No.
No.
That answer was no.
That is what we discussed.
But that's not the answer.
Vividly, I remember.
That's not the answer I received. The answer said, yes, we have to pay the yearly membership.
Independent of the upgrade.
Okay, so a yearly membership.
Yes.
On top of an upgrade fee.
Yes, yeah.
And that all got dumped here?
No.
It got spread out, but the question is.
What's here then?
The question is that, uh, we knew this was coming, we knew how much it was gonna be, and we still underestimate it by a ton. I mean, this is not an unexpected expense, okay?
So that's another place we have to adjust the budget to match reality.
Yeah, and somewhere else we have to adjust the budget to compensate.
Oh, yes, I understand that too, that, you know, there's something, you have to leave.
And that's just for bias inside that account, doesn't count the other stuff that's in there. So the, uh. Oh, okay. Well, the thing about it, it, it does do the stuff, and there's a certain cost of doing business once you say, uh, you're municipal, like, we are an index to get away from it because, I mean, they're big, it's capital space, two years ago was a loose-up steps for the, uh, city hall. The, uh, and we have a lot more things that we're doing. So, and that's, that's a, that's a real serious question is there's a baseline expense to run in municipal.
How much was that yearly fee?
Four, four thousand?
Forty-one thousand.
Four, four thousand one hundred?
Forty-one hundred, okay.
Okay, but now, if I look across the same line that we're talking about, where we already doubled our budget, last year was eighteen hundred, the year before that was eighteen hundred, so something, it sounds like something else got added into here that wasn't there before. It's only, it's only the first fifteen hundred.
First upgrade fee?
Well, that's, yeah, it's supposed to be a separate thing, it should be in this one, presumably.
Break.
It's not, I'm linked in there.
Oh, this will be reimbursed? They had a changeover in their system that caused. This billion, ah. Okay, this, there's fifteen hundred dollars of this that's gonna be reimbursed by the Bank of America.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you, take care.
So that brings it down to two thousand. So there is a reimbursement deal, which will probably show up somewhere else.
It'll show up in a brief.
It'll show up in the, and you'll never know that you showed up.
Joe, may I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
About yesterday, um, or Monday, when we were doing the warrants, um, Laura seemed to have a problem, um, not being able to pull up the budget that we could see. And she said she had to go through bias, that they'd have to.
Yeah, contacting Liz, he's working with her.
Okay, but now, is this gonna be another upgrade to be able to get this? Okay.
Yeah, we're having, we're having some problems with bias that may be the, uh, may be the server.
Mm-hmm.
And that's part of, uh, an ongoing check that, so. Okay, so there's gonna be about fifteen hundred bucks come up with this number.
Yeah, how do we, you know, this.
It'll, it'll stay there.
Oh, this number will stay there.
How do we know this, uh, when the items come through? You see, when we did do.
They don't look that close. They look at the actual fund number of, you know, they don't.
Well, down there like five fourteen.
They don't look at one item.
And they look at oh, oh, one.
Gotcha.
At oh, oh, one, right.
Well, we're still sitting at forty-four percent of our annual budget and liability insurance is probably really low. Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a big, big part of it. That and the fifteen hundred bucks we'll charge. And so, so other line items seem to be more or less in line, travel, train, seminars.
Mostly are quite consistent, actually.
Well, travel, train, seminars, we've used, uh.
Yep, I saw that.
For exactly, no, that's for, that's fine, it's okay.
What's that professional services, five fourteen, fifteen, forty-one?
Oh, that was penny print, oh, uh, no.
The oh, one, the zero, zero.
Zero, zero?
Oh, yeah, that's over.
Evergreen Security and State Officer.
What's Evergreen Security?
Their security system. Their alarm system.
Yeah.
Yeah, they charge a one-time fee every year.
And that would be the fee is?
This year was three hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Okay, and again, that's a budgeting error.
Yep. Because, that's how we're doing it every quarter, right, so we can.
Yeah. And that's what the legislature said, you know?
But my question is if we know that these are reoccurring expenses every year, the one-time fee for every, we should have put that in there or somebody should have let us know that that comes out every year.
Well, there's some level of over-optimism here, cause if you look at the previous years, what we spent in that category, we estimate.
Much, much more.
Uh, it's much, much more, so the fact that we typed a number in there, but we should have typed a bigger number.
Right, but those are actuals. So if, if we really go back and look at our proposed budgets for those years, right? So this past year, we put in a hundred dollars in there because we were gonna try to minimize that.
Yeah.
Expenditure.
We didn't do enough analysis.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
That's correct.
Is that we need to be educated up here so that we know what to expect.
And I, and I expect since we now have bias in here, I don't have to bring it back to you, I can look directly at the question.
Well, the next line item is five fifteen, I'm gonna continue on, and that's over fifty-five percent of the yearly budget.
Well, that's because of the, uh, litigation that, uh, we talked about last time.
Yeah.
Uh, we're in a calm time right now, but can't say that it's gonna continue. So that's gonna have to be faced with reality. Actually, we have two choices, either defend against lawsuits or lose the motherfought. That's the two options the city has. And it asked MRC, MRC, if I could do pro se, and they said no.
You what?
Pro se. Pro se, that was your name.
Oh. Thank you.
So.
Okay, and then the, the government services, we're at half of the budget already. I assume that's another time phasing thing? Forgive my ignorance, I just.
No, it's dues, fees, subscriptions, memberships. We tend to pay those in January, February.
A W C.
A W C, yeah.
And then the other one over up really high is, uh, is five twenty-one, wow, we're forty-eight percent of our yearly budget.
That, that goes in the sheriff's office contract. What we've got is two quarters paid so far.
Okay, so perfect.
Fourth quarter.
Fourth and first.
Fourth and first.
Okay, perfect.
That's the one.
That's what I don't know.
We pay the fourth quarter first, second and third.
Yeah, it's front lettered at the end.
That's why I'm just, you know, I'm just new at this.
Oh, you're doing exactly the correct thing.
Can I ask a, a question?
Yes.
With this bias system, can you bring up the expenditures that we have that are exceeding what we budgeted? And only those? Instead of.
The exceptions or variances?
There is a report, I have it done.
Okay, we should try to do that, just because I'm curious to see, I mean, a, a, a lot of these that we went through. I mean, we scrubbed pretty hard, there's really no movement left. But if we, if we discuss where we are exceeding our budget amounts, um, and you have that type of a report capability, that's something that we can review quickly. It's not something we can, you know, we have to spend all night on, but, um.
Well, that's what we, the finance. Well, that's what the finance committee is trying to implement. And right now, this is the report we have. The specialized report like that is a new feature this year that came with the upgrade. That's what we didn't have before.
Okay.
And so Laura's got to figure out how to generate those reports. It's like, I don't know what it's like, it's like the old databases.
Didn't they give you training on this? Isn't that what it's paid for?
This is what it is.
Okay, what is that? It's a report.
Yeah, it's the ones where we're exceeding budget.
Oh, so you have that. Okay.
This for three, six, oh, is what we've gone over, what we expected.
We don't part of go for.
For the expenditures.
Okay, here we go. Present, okay, so there it is.
There it is, yeah, okay, that's.
That's my line item, okay.
Well, it looks like you have my line item. No, it's by, you don't call it line item, that's a three-digit number, we're going to call that.
That's a line item.
Oh, okay.
That's okay, yeah.
The three-digit number, you mean like zero, zero, one, that's.
No, 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 the five fourteen.
Five fourteen. Three digits.
Yeah.
There's a bias term, I mean, there's a.
Well, that's what you said they use, that that's where they looked at it.
No, they looked at zero, zero, one, right?
Yeah, they look at fund.
They look at fund, the general fund, they look at the general fund, then they look at street fund.
The actual entire amount of the ending fund.
They look at this number right here. They don't look at the line item.
They look at pages one, one through six as a single, as a single.
Right, 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 I understand. So if, if, if we're, if we can see this report, right? We know where we're going over, we know where we need to cut back. I mean, and what's the bottom line? Where are we right now this year as far as expenditures versus revenue? Are we red, are we black? Where are we at?
We've got a hundred and ninety days to cover. But that's what it shows right now.
Yeah, that's what it shows right now. And that's, that's the thing about it, this thing is not just about coming in perfectly in here. I mean, it's going to hit some business.
So maybe we need to review this after we get our tax money.
Well, you're always going to hate any snapshots you take. You're going to have quantization effects.
I understand.
And so if you wait till the tax money comes in, you can do it in time, yeah.
Just get closer, that's all I think. And you maybe look at the start, looking at the half-year review, we've got half our money.
The problem is that there's a lot of assumptions right now. We can assume this and we can assume that. And I think that's what's going to get us in trouble like it did last year.
Well, I mean, here's the first example back on page one. The liquor income was an assumption and aid to citizens was an assumption. It was a very conservative assumption at the time and, but it wasn't conservative enough perhaps.
It's just not holding up to reality, unfortunately, yeah. I only had one other really comment on all the stuff that we were given. And that was in the water operating budget.
What, what, okay, before we go that far, I've got questions previous to that.
Sorry.
No, no problem. Okay. Street fuel tax is way, way low, ten percent of estimate at this time. Does that come in in chunks and bits and pieces?
Yeah. The.
The what fund?
End of March.
Uh, page seven, street fuel tax.
I did not receive, I've heard.
How much did you receive at the end of March, did you show?
No, I don't have to.
Oh, okay.
It's not in.
It's not in here yet, okay. So we've got a chunk of money that came in after the cutoff date of this. We're doing this, we're not doing it, you know, in March thirty-first. We're doing it at the end of the fourth, whatever the sixth, two, four, six voucher set. Okay, and then we go on down further in page seven of your expenditures and streets. Five forty-two, thirty, forty-eight, oh, oh, repairs and maintenance. We looked at three hundred bucks in there. That is approximately one, one dump truck load of gravel for a section of streets. And we have a, a street that is our responsibility that will just about consume all that money. Takes a truckload of gravel.
Gun road?
Gun road, yeah. And the rev two choices, you know, if you really look at it, we have two choices. One, we bring, put the gravel in, or two, we shut down that corner of gun road, say, close the road. Close the road is cheaper than bringing in gravel. And obviously you start seeing the sort of, you know, impacts of this. I think we just need to be realistic and add some more money to this. And we do have ending fund balance. We did show a gain at this budget, so there's probably probably a hundred, six or seven hundred dollars in without compromising it. However, I want to make sure that these street fuel packs are conservative, estimate is conservative enough.
Well, I have a, actually, I do have a comment on this one. Similar to, it, it, and it's in the use of the beginning fund balance, the carryover.
Yeah.
It makes it deceptive because when you look at the actual income for this period and realize that, you know, I've got a tiny bit of that going on. It's actually only three thousand dollars came in and was spent ten. Which is a much more honest statement of where we're actually at. Now, it's not going to be that way long, but I got very, the water confused me more than anything else. But as far as, you know, revenue coming in versus costs going up, yeah.
Okay. There's another thing we need, is some sort of.